For to order. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is he okay? Roll call, please.
Marian Rosa.
Here.
Kent Demers.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony Debona.
Here.
Carrie Lafferty. Karina Noid.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Would anyone like to address the council this evening? Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I come to speak to you on two issues. The first one is a very nice one. I live on 514 Sylvan Lake Road, and we had our first, we have had our road redone by the Public Works of our town. It is so beautifully done, it's like driving on a cushion. And it's macadam, I presume, like it has been used for years. But it is very well done, and I wanted to thank the Public Works Department through you for a job that is indeed fine. A second thing that I wanted to speak to you about is that I was here at the table last time you met, and I asked the question, where is the town treasurer? And you, Madam Chairman, said you don't know. My question is, have you learned where the town treasurer is? Because I received no calls during the week, two weeks since your last meeting, even though your staff had said that they would call me. But I'm presuming maybe that they haven't found the town treasurer either.
I thought the town manager had responded to you and told you who the individual was doing the town treasurer's duties.
No, I have had no information.
Madam Chairwoman, I had thought that Lisa Catania was going to respond to you. If she has not, I will call you first thing in the morning to give you that answer. And the town treasurer is identifiable, just to let you know. That's up to the chairwoman, if she'd like me to answer that or not.
Sure.
So the town treasurer is incorporated into the Assistant Finance Director's position. So that was the position that Maria Guerrero held, and it will be, continue on with that position as we fill that position. So the treasurer position and the Assistant Finance Director will be one and the same person.
Okay. And of course, you've read the charter, and you know that not everybody can be a treasurer, because there are persons specifically that cannot fulfill that kind of a duty.
That's correct. The Finance Director cannot fill that position.
Okay. So am I hearing correctly that at this moment today, there is still no treasurer? That you're still moving the blocks?
Well, I don't know what you're hearing, but what I'm saying is that that treasurer's position will be continued on when we hire the Assistant Finance Director. Those duties are distributed amongst the other staff that are in finance, and they're not being done by the Finance Director, so that we're in compliance with the charter.
Okay. Tell me, do you have all of those positions and their job descriptions in the body of our website?
No, we have not gone that far as to posting job descriptions on our website. We also do not include our union contracts, which is public information. We are continuing to improve as we move along.
Well, we all hope we improve when we go along. I haven't heard a name, so I guess we're still waiting for a name to be evolved in your processes.
Well, I don't know if you're looking at my notes, but I plan to address that during my town manager's report on the process of the interview process for the Assistant Finance Director's position.
Okay. All right. I think that it's very kind of you to express this and to further our knowledge on the subject. I'd like you to know why I am interested. And I'm interested because the treasure office was put into place in Connecticut under state statute, and it has been existing for over 100 years at this point, if my math is right. The thing that makes the treasurer's appointment and place in town government so intriguing to me is that it is written in state statute that that person, be it male or female, is supposed to be able to show every taxpayer in town what the books show is coming in and going out. That's wonderful to hear in today's world of freedom of information, where you have to pay for every page when you're interested in something. It's wonderful to have that kind of legal language identifying that there is one person that is supposed to look at the taxpayer and say, hi, can I help you? And when we say that we would like to know something about the fiscal situation, also be able, and that's your job to find the ability, but it's my job as a taxpayer to be able to look at the numbers which are in the books and to be able to say, yeah, that makes sense, or geez, that doesn't make sense. So this openness of the position of a town treasurer, in addition to the responsibilities that you place, we place as town folk, in terms of their job description, are a wonderful breath of fresh air, and they're a wonderful opportunity for transparency, and a wonderful opportunity for something that you spoke to me during the get-together that had, the Fall Festival. Thank you, it was so warm, nobody thought of fall. But at the Fall Festival, you had asked me, what can we do to bring our people together? And my answer was, you start inviting the most, the best crew that you possibly can without looking at what party they're from. In other words, that you choose the teams that you want to govern the town based on capability and not on a particular party adherence. So-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the five minutes is up.
And you're not interested? Listen to me.
I certainly am.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to be fair to everyone. Anyone else?
Catherine Camerow, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. At the last meeting, I asked who was responsible to confirm that the town owned that parcel of land that's at Buckingham Street and Route 262 before we intruded on state property. I followed up with an email to the town council email address, but I didn't get an answer. And I do want an answer to that question. The council approved $8,000 to buy land from the state that we were told the town owned. Since it was Mr. Raymo who gave us the presentation on building the civic park, would it be correct that it was his responsibility to know if the town owned that entire parcel of land? Is it safe to say that that's true? I don't think you're going to answer me tonight, but that's what I'm going to assume, unless somebody's going to answer the email and tell me otherwise. I did ask the question. So I guess several of us called it when the Assistant Finance Director was hired before the director. We knew she was getting the job. That hiring order would be unheard of in any other municipality, but not here in Watertown, because it was done with design. Originally, I thought it was to try to make it appear that our Republican state rep's sister wasn't easily getting a top job. But that just didn't really make sense, since the council and your town manager don't care what the public thinks about your actions. We have seen it with your hiring of a severely underqualified town manager, and we've all been paying that price. But at last month's meeting, and tonight, Ms. Wazutinsky's presentation brought it all to light. Our charter states that the Finance Director cannot perform the duties of the treasurer, and however, the Assistant Finance Director can. So if you had hired Ms. Guerrero immediately as the Finance Director, she would not have been able to transfer money between accounts. And having the out-of-retirement acting Finance Director training her replacement under the guise of an assistant, they were both handling the treasurer's position, which means some distinct lines were being crossed. Perhaps it was necessary to do some finagling of monies before it could no longer be performed by either Ms. Guerrero or Ms. Zepone. It now appears that our freshly hired Finance Director has unclean hands, having commingled the training for the position of Finance Director while holding the treasurer's job. There's a line drawn in these Finance Department positions to prevent embezzlement. Has the shifting of the duties of the treasurer been presented to the auditors for approval? This is the most important issue for town management and protection of our taxpayers' money, but the job duties, as we have heard tonight, of the treasurer are bouncing from one hand to another, and it's really quite concerning. I don't really think it's something to be laughing at. I sincerely hope our new Finance Director understands that she has been hired for a position that has garnered public mistrust. She'll need to have some thicker skin than our delicate flower town manager, because her job performance will be scrutinized by the residents. Filling top positions in Town Hall with family and friends is just like building a house on sand. It will eventually crumble under pressure. Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I feel I need to address this.
Go right ahead.
I very much appreciate Ms. Camero's highlight of me as a person, a town manager. What's funny to me is I've been in this position for four years. I've been very successful in everything that I've done. And the only words that are a problem in Watertown are the ones that pass your lips. You have no experience, and you're commenting on these things. If you have a specific problem, I appreciate if you come in, and I would love to talk with you over it.
I can't, because I'm not allowed to have confrontation with you, because I'm a detective.
All right, Mark, that's enough.
There's a reason for that. I would like to correct that, because she's claiming that she has a protective order against me?
No, I didn't claim a protective order.
What are you claiming? Because I haven't broken any laws?
I will not discuss with you at a town council.
Okay, call to order, please, Madam Chair.
Rob, please.
Okay.
I'll take care of it. Just keep quiet.
This is enough.
It's enough.
Yeah, no.
Is there anyone else that would like to talk to the council? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Harold Berger. I'm at 82 Flintlock Road. I guess my issue is not nearly as important as the ones I've just been listening to, but it is to me. I live on the cove portion of Lake Winnemog. Been there for 10 years. After the recent storm, the day after, I noticed that on the cove portion, at least, about three trees have fallen directly into the lake. There's one fairly large tree, that's about 20 feet from the edge of my property, that is obvious, and the others are fairly obvious as well. I waited about two weeks before communicating with Public Service. Obviously, there was much more important things to take care of than these trees that are, I consider more of an eyesore than anything else. But considering everything else that was going on, I waited a couple of weeks before calling Public Works. Public Works took me, I believe, to the Highway Department, and then eventually to Parks and Recreation, where I've had a couple of lengthy conversations with Michael Gainham, I hope I'm pronouncing his name correctly, and a number of emails. The bottom line is that the town is not going to do anything about these fallen trees, and that's essentially it. During one of the emails, he seemed to even indicate that there might not be any quote-unquote desire to get involved. So whether there's a desire or not, he also mentioned that there isn't a penny in the budget to take care of these trees. Well, in the midst of those communications, and I might add that Mr. Gainham is a pleasure to speak to and discuss everything that I wanted to discuss in full. So I have no issues at all. I have an issue with the final decision that these trees are going to be left alone, literally to decompose. During the midst of these conversations and emails, I asked Brian from Good Old Boys to come by and take a look. He's done some work on my property. I know that he does work with the town, so I had confidence in asking him to come by and take a look at what I was referring to. He came by. He told me a number of things. Number one, that he could take care of all three trees. We're talking about three trees just in the cove area. I'm not referring to any other trees that might be located in a larger portion of the lake. He said he could take care of it, and he said it would be a significant effort, but he could do it, and he gave me a price for all three. He gave me a price for the one tree that's nearest my property, which is the largest, and then he gave me a price for all three. In my conversations with Mr. Gainham, I asked him what he's been discussing with his colleagues, his team, and his commission. So I'm not sure how many colleagues he's speaking about. I'm not sure how many people are on the team, and I'm not sure how many people are on the commission. But apparently, quite a bit of conversation has already taken place about these trees, and the final decision was made not to do anything about it, despite the fact that nobody saw what I was referring to. But since there was no money in the budget, I guess I could understand why a decision would be made without even seeing what the problem is. In my conversations with Mr. Gainham, I asked him if he came up, or his team came up with a price that it would take to get rid of these trees. And he said he did have a price. I had Brian's price. And before I describe both of those prices, I'll, excuse me, I'll just tell you that, in my opinion, this is no more than an eyesore. It didn't have any more importance to me than literally an eyesore on a previously pristine town-run lake, which is no longer pristine. So that's where I was coming from. And that's what I discussed with Mr. Gainham. On Saturday, my 14-year-old niece came by. She lives in New Jersey. She's a freshman in high school, and she was upset that she's been visiting me for 10 years, and where she swims in the lake is now this big tree, and she wants to know what I'm going to do about it. So she's also more than upset with me that I'm supposedly allowing the town to let the tree rot away, quote-unquote, while it's decomposing, according to her. Now, she's 14 years old, and she's questioning me about what's going to happen about the decomposition of these trees. I told her I had no idea, but that wasn't my concern. My concern is just that it's an eyesore. She said, well, her concern is that when she keeps coming here for the next 20 to 30 years, which I'm sure she will, these trees will decompose according to the town's ruling, not to do anything about it. So she went on ChatGPT, which I didn't know about, at least I heard about it, but I didn't know what to expect. And within 30 seconds, she asked the following question, and I believe I can, I recall it exactly. Are there any, are there any negative effects if a large fallen tree is allowed to decompose in a lake? And within one second, ChatGPT came up with eight bad things that could happen when a large tree falls into a lake. If you want to go on ChatGPT and ask that same question, you'll get the same answer. So there's all kinds of bad things that are going to happen if those trees are literally allowed to decompose. Back to Brian and what it's going to cost. I asked Mr. Gainham if his colleagues, his commission, and his team came up with a price of what it's going to cost to get rid of these trees, should they attempt to do it. He said, among other things, we're talking in the neighborhood of $25,000. I said, well, that's significant, that's for sure. Brian from Good Old Boys, who I'm certain, as certain as I can be at least, that if these trees are ever taken out, it will be by his crew. His price for all three trees is $4,500. So that's where we're at. I'd like to figure out if, for $4,500, we could dispose of these eyesores and possibly take a look at, I don't know, whatever else might happen to avoid this from happening again. But these trees are right on the waterfront, and when a large rainstorm happens, things-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the time limit is up.
That's fine. I'm done.
I appreciate you giving us that information.
Right. So I'd like to know if something can be done, essentially, beyond allowing them to rot away. And so would my niece want to know. And you don't want to deal with-
I think you already have your answer from the town.
Going to let them rot away. That's the answer. That's it. So for $4,500, I'm asking you to go on ChatGPT, ask that same question. If you want to give me another minute, I can give you that answer.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Right? You don't want to hear it?
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay. No one wants to hear it. Good. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Under recognition.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd just like to state a congratulations to the Watertown Lions Club for their 75 years of service to the Water Oak community. They celebrated on Saturday with a dinner at San Marino's, and they do a lot for our town. I just wanted to recognize them.
Very good.
Awesome. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the October 15, 2024 special meeting minutes. Second?
And we also have minutes from the 7th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Also, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the October, the regular meeting on October 7, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Abstention, Anthony Debona.
I would also like to abstain. I wasn't here.
Did you get the abstentions? Moving under the chairman's report, we have a message from the Watertown Oakville Chamber of Commerce inviting council members to attend a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Wednesday, October 30, at 2:30 p.m., to mark the grand opening of the middle, which is located at 16 Straits Turnpike in Watertown. Do we have a report from the Public Works Department?
We did meet, and we reviewed all the ongoing projects that are currently happening right now. There's no other update.
Okay. Thank you. Town manager's report.
Miss Madam Chairwoman and members of the town council, I'd like to say that our 2024 local emergency management plan has been approved on October 8, so we're glad to get that behind us. CLA has begun bank statement reconciliation, so we're on our way with that. The interview for the Assistant Finance Director will take place tomorrow. We have three candidates that have applied, and I hope that one of those candidates will be a viable Assistant Finance Director. I just want to put on the town council's radar discussion possibly for November to talk about debt service and the prioritizations of projects. For the next one to three years, we have multiple projects that are going to be hitting. Already, our municipal parking lot, which is going to be completed this year, the ADA sidewalks for 2025, Main Street safety improvements, we hope to have completed in 2026, the Main Street connectivity grant, which will be the St. John's Wall in 2025 as well. And then we continue to do our road infrastructure. Looking at the next three to five years, we have to continue to look at the road infrastructure to improve our roadways, look at sidewalks, drainage. We've talked about a highway department, a community center, and a police department, not necessarily in that order. But I think we should have some discussions to prioritize most of these, so that we have an understanding on how to move forward with this reduction in debt service. This is a perfect timing for us to take an in-depth look at all Watertown municipal buildings and schools. We could kind of understand how to, if we were to build something new, what do we do, and how do we repurpose the buildings that is then vacated by the new building? So I think these should be all points that we should start discussing, so that we could forge a plan moving forward for the next three to five years.
Under new business. Item A.
I move to appoint Robin Anaimo, 34 Woodbury Road, Watertown, to be appointed as a member of the Historic District Commission for the term to expire January 2025. This appointment is to replace the vacant seat of Nancy Consala. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $1,447.47 for police overtime. Funds received through a grant for click-it-or-ticket enforcement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the town of Watertown to enter into an agreement with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for the Urban Act Grant Award for Steel Brook Greenway Improvements.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $6,600 from the general fund for guardrail replacements. Funds received from insurance claimed due to guardrail damage on Skipper Ave.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $2,374.03 for tax refunds. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.